All right, thanks, Brian, and welcome, everyone, to this January 8, 2024, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a proclamation for human trafficking awareness, so I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Yeah, 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 everybody can, y'all are all welcome to come up, that's fine. And Jasmine and Alicia, you're welcome to come up as well. You got a strong Blazer game, too, man, I like it. Looks good. So proclamation for Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas Alabama's Human Trafficking Awareness Month was established in January 2011 in observance of National Human Trafficking Awareness Day to proclaim the equality, excuse me, the equality and freedom of all people to advocate for legislation, to educate leaders, and to encourage public awareness to the various forms of human trafficking. Whereas human trafficking is a public health issue and a crime that affects individuals, families, communities across generations, exploiting the most vulnerable among us and weakening our collective well-being. And whereas human trafficking occurs when an adult child, when an adult or child is recruited, harbored, obtained, or exported through force, fraud, or coercion for the purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, involuntary servitude, debt bondage, and other methods of slavery. And whereas an estimated 27.6 million are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reported in every state and territory across the United States, including here in our own community. And whereas the risks and prevalence of human trafficking is greater now than ever in person and online in industries such as restaurants, cleaning services, constructions, construction workers, factories, and by strangers or someone they know, including partners, parents, and other family members. And whereas the City of Homewood seeks to enhance public welfare, protect public safety, and promote human flourishing for all residents and visitors by declaring that freedom from human trafficking is a fundamental human right. And whereas due to its isolating nature, many individuals remain unaware that trafficking is a threat to their neighborhoods, their families, and their children. The first step is eliminating human trafficking in our community is education. We must work diligently to ensure that all frontline industries, educators, first responders, and parents are aware of this issue, know how to spot it, and how to report it. We must work together as a community to bring victims to safety and punish the perpetrators. And whereas stopping human trafficking requires a coordinated, community-wide response, and the City of Homewood supports partnerships to comprehensively address human trafficking and create trafficking-free zones. Now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim January 2024 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and celebrate our continued commitment as a trafficking-free zone community. We encourage all residents to join us in raising the visibility of this crime and to become more informed about ways to prevent, recognize, and respond to potential victims of human trafficking in our community. Absolutely.
You absolutely may.
Well, thank you for this. We're joined tonight by representatives from HICA and from Trafficking Hope, Daniel Hadgra, George Hadgra, and our good friend Daniel from HICA, along with representatives from around the state. More than 50 communities this month are proclaiming this as a Human Trafficking Awareness Month. I'd be remiss, though, if I didn't point out, Homewood, you were one of the first to do this several years ago. You were one of the first pre-COVID to train all your teachers in your schools about signs and awareness on social media and human trafficking. That was pre-COVID. We hope we can certainly come back post-COVID and do that again. But to say that you were one of the first is truly a statement of what this community feels about this issue. It is an issue about education. It's an issue that is underreported. It is an issue that affects us as the I-2059, I-65 corridor in Birmingham. You know that corridor very well. And without Trafficking Hope, without HICA, without all of our partners under the Child Trafficking Solutions Project, we wouldn't be able to be out doing what we do. So to these ladies and gentlemen here, they're the true testament of learning about what this issue is and educating the public about where we go, so we appreciate it. Thank you to all of you.
Hello, everyone. How are you guys doing today? My name is Jasmine Deloach. I do a lot of speaking around the world on this issue. My daughter was a human trafficking victim. A guy got her, and basically she went to Pennsyl Valley High School. She hooked up with a girl that was in the school, which was a bait girl, that hooked her up with a guy on social media. The guy came to my home one Sunday morning and got my baby and sold her through five different states and put on heroin and cocaine at 16 years old. I didn't know where to look for my baby. It took undercovers. It took the district attorney before he even became the district attorney. It took a lot of other officials, Sonny Slaughter, a lot of other people to help me get my baby back. We steadily tried to buy her on back page. So I know how bad this issue is. This is a terrible issue. They're not only affecting little, they're not only affecting our teenagers, they want our babies, too. You know, I mean, I know a lot of people don't want to talk to their kids, but if you don't talk to your kids, somebody will, and it would be the wrong talk. So, you know, my child was a victim of trafficking, so I wanted to let you guys know. I got my baby back, but she still was damaged, and she still is damaged, and she ended up getting back with a trafficker who went on a killing spree, and she was with him, but she didn't do any of the crime. And guess what? My baby was charged with capital murder, and she's sitting in Lee County Jail on charges, on capital murder charges, just by being with that person. So I want you to know that this happens a lot. My child was 15 when she was introduced to this and trafficked throughout the states. It took an undercover Arundel officer to step in to make sure we get my baby back. And only how we did that is he pinged her phone just to let us know what location, and that's how we end up trying to buy her on back page. But they moved her so much, they trafficked her through five different states, sold her in Richmond, Virginia, where I had to stand before a judge, just like I'm standing before you guys. So, you know, this is real. I had to stand before a judge and explain why my baby was found out of state when I issued a BOLO on her. You know, nobody took me up there. The Thompsons over Thompson, track flew me, tractor flew me up there on their private plane, covered all expenses, sent me with JP Dice, the weatherman. It took a team of people, the district attorney, Danny Carr, Sonny Slaughter, a whole lot of other people, Chris Anderson, everybody stood up. That was in 2015, so I want y'all to know that these things are real, and I hope that y'all push more to stop trafficking because, you know, even if y'all have signs in your building, that will be great, so people know where to run to, how to stop this from happening, who to call. Some people don't tell you, and nine signs out of 10, they don't even know they're victims. So I wanted you guys to know what's going on with trafficking. It's real in this world. My name is Jasmine Deloach. I'm the founder of Angels Arms Women and Teen Organization, and I do a lot in the community with rescuing victims, and we get them from all over, in big houses, where it'd be a whole lot of girls and boys, just in houses. You might think they just live there, but they're not living there, and they live, they live their best life, but they're trafficking victims, which they don't even know because of what they're being given. So I want y'all to pay attention to everything and know that this is real, and this is a hard fight, and it's a dangerous fight, but we need more people to step up and be real about what's going on in this world with our kids and their stolen babies. So my name is Jasmine Deloach, and y'all have a great day.
Mayor, you want? Thank you all very much. All right. So with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to start with the invocation from Counselor Andrus, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Bow your heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, first, I want to say thank you for the work that Jasmine and the others from HICA and those fighting human trafficking are doing, and please be with them as they fight on, and Jasmine's daughter in particular. On this first council meeting in 2024, we give thanks to you for bringing us to a new year full of new hope and new dreams. We know that all gifts and blessings are from you, and we give thanks for all that you've bestowed upon us. It is your Holy Spirit that knits us together, and we are so grateful. We pray for guidance as we serve the citizens of Homewood. We pray for knowledge, humility, compassion, faith, and open hearts. And as we look ahead into 2024, may we remember the past and the lessons we've gained. It is in your name we pray. Amen.
One allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Ms. Andrus. Mr. Seacrest, if you will, please call roll.
Counselor Gualdy.
Here.
Geer. Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton. Sims.
Here.
Jones.
Smith.
Here.
Nels.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden.
Here.
And President Watt.
Here.
All right, so we've got nine tonight. Next item on the agenda is the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of December 18, 2023. Those have previously been distributed. I'd entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gualdy, second by Mr. Sims. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved, nine to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. First, we had an at-large part board position that closed today, and I think we got at least three applicants that I've seen. Ms. Smith, do you know when you want to do interviews, or do we need to wait for the schedules?
I'd really like to go ahead pretty soon and get those done because we've already had our January meeting, and we didn't have a, we had an empty spot. So Beau, could we try to schedule, I think there's three people, for interviews, maybe next Wednesday, 17th? Could we try that? Or, oh, no, I can't do Thursday. Yeah, Wednesday, it would need to be Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, the 17th?
17th, yeah.
What time do you want to start?
Um, at 5:00 if it's possible. And if we needed to back it up to 5:15, that would be fine, too.
You want 15 minutes, 20 minutes?
Um, probably 15. I think 15 minutes is enough.
Yep.
Per person.
All right. All right. All right. We also have some spots that we need to open. The first is the Ward 4 BZA position. Is that good? Do you want to do it until January 29th?
Yes, and I'll just say out loud, the sitting member of the commission, Megan Hand, is planning to reapply for that position. She has served as the chair, and I know she is planning on reapplying for that position. But yes, let's keep it open until, what, 4:30 on, 4:30 on the 29th?
Then we have two BZA supernumerary openings. I believe both of those people are also eligible to serve again, so we'll also do that one to January 29th at 4:30. All right. We have a few additions to the agenda tonight. First, we have one addition to Old Business. This is 071223, request for consideration for Homewood Athletic Foundation to host Corner Palooza on Soho Plaza, brought to us by the Athletic Foundation and Counselor Smith. Then we have one item to, that we will add to Committee Referral Agenda. That is 080124, request to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Alabama Graphics AG's funding for a 36-month plotter lease, brought to us by Kale Smith, and that will go to Finance. And then one item to Other New Business, 090124, request for consideration of an ABC O20 Restaurant Retail Liquor License for Slice Homewood LLC, DBA Slice Pizza and Brew House located at 1010 Oxmoor Road, brought to us by Melody Salter. And then lastly, one item that's going to be dropped from Other New Business. It will, however, stay on Committee Referral Agenda. That is 040124, request to set a public hearing and referral to Special Issues Committee for consideration of a signed variance at 1916 28th Avenue South, brought to us by White House Interiors, Alpha Graphics, and Wyatt Pugh. We're going to wait until after the committee meeting before we set that public hearing, as you'll all understand, when we get to an item later tonight that will drive me crazy. All right, so with those changes, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I missed the first one. Is that Ms. Nels? Thank you. Motion by Ms. Nels, second by Mr. Harden. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved, nine to zero. There's nothing on the consent agenda tonight, so we'll go straight to Old Business. First item, 181123, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to approve the amended development plan at 800 Lake Shore Drive for Sanford University to permit the proposed construction of a new five-story, 515-bed freshman residence hall comprising a total of 142,737 GSP, intended to accommodate the university's ongoing student housing needs, as comes to us from Sanford and the Planning Commission, which had a vote of eight to zero favorable recommendation. And I'll start with a report from PND, although you may have already reported this out. I just don't remember, quite frankly.
Oh, I got it right here. Do I have it right here?
I do, I have it right here. Sorry, I was thrown off because of the 29th, the other stuff on the 29th, sorry. After hearing from Caleb Martin, the committee voted five to zero to refer this item to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the applicant, whoever's going to represent the applicant tonight, to come on up to the podium. If you will, just sign in and give us your name and tell us about the project.
Hi. Hi, my name is Caleb Martin, Cadre Engineering, and here to present the freshman housing project. I guess, obviously, Sanford University. Really, really excited about the project. It's going to be located inside the Quad area, kind of the Montague Drive Loop, and will house strictly the freshman class. This is, it's going to be a big step for Sanford University, pulling all of the freshmen together, kind of in one group, and kind of emphasize that first-year experience for them. This project will allow, I guess, the other classes to kind of be brought back on campus as opposed to seeking shelter, lodging elsewhere. Like I said, it's going to be located inside the Quad area, kind of in that university center, the food court is, the newly, the Cybert Hall being renovated now, kind of in that same sector. So really excited about the development there. Open up any kind of questions you might have for us.
Yeah, Mr. Harden.
You're about to add 515 people. Some will have cars, some won't. Where are your parking codes?
So we've looked at that. We have a traffic consultant coming in to advise on what solutions we can have that are a little less invasive. One thing that I guess we are looking at, we're intend to submit for an addition to the parking deck on campus, the upcoming, for the upcoming planning, planning development, final development plan update. So that has been addressed. I guess the Sanford is committed to having, I guess, the Greek dorms, the freshman dorms, and the parking deck opened all within the same time period. So the dorms and the parking updates are, I guess, additions are all being considered at the same time.
So we're here tonight to have the public hearing on it. Are you saying that you're not sure what the actual parking is going to be at this point for that? Is that what I'm hearing from you?
No, sir. No, sir. So Sanford is taking several different angles at understanding how to address parking. It's not necessarily an issue of total number of parking spots on campus. It's more so convenient parking adjacent to dormitories and those types of things. As you can see on our final development plan, the university is overparked by some percentage as it is. So what Sanford has done is, like I said, gone out and got a traffic consultant to see what changes can be made to make the parking spaces closer to dorms, classrooms, those types of things, more accessible and easily, I guess, used. Aside from that, like I said, the university intends on adding to the existing parking deck, which will further alleviate that problem.
Might be the only university in the country that's overparked. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak for or against this item? Now that I will close the public hearing, ask if there are any other questions or comments from council. If not, Mr. Kendrick, would you give us a first reading?
Yes, sir. It's an ordinance to amend the final development plan for the Sanford University Institutional Zoning District I-3 for the property described in Section 1 below and in Exhibit A attached here, too. Whereas the Plan Commission of the City has recommended favorably, the final development plan attaches Exhibit B. Now therefore, be ordained by the City Council as follows. That the final development plan follow the following described property described in Exhibit A located in the City of Homewood with street address 800 Lake Shore Drive, Sanford University, be in the same as hereby amended pursuant to the final development plan attached as Exhibit B. Section 2, from and after the enactment of this ordinance and the approval of the mayor, the otherwise becoming law, that the final development plan attached as Exhibit B shall control the uses, restrictions, applicable to the property described herein. Section 3, the January 8, 2024, at 6:00 PM is the time and place fixed for the public hearing, at which time all public, the public we heard. Section 4, the city clerk is given notice as required by law of this public hearing. Section 4, if any part of provisions of the ordinance is declared to be unconstitutional or invalid by a court of competent jurisdictions, all other parts, provisions, or sections of this ordinance not effective thereby shall remain in full force and effect. Section 6, ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by the City Council approval of the mayor as otherwise becoming law.
All right, thank you. All right. If there are still no questions or comments from council, then I'd entertain a motion and a second for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Andrus, second by Mr. Alamon, and a roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Counselor Gualdy. Geer. Alamon.
Yes.
Wolverton. Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
President Watt.
Yes. All right, so that's nine to zero. Now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Harden, second by Ms. Andrus, and another roll call vote, please, Mr. Seacrest.
Counselor Gualdy.
Yes.
Alamon.
Yes.
Sims.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Nels.
Yes.
Andrus.
Yes.
Harden.
Yes.
And President Watt.
Yes, so that is approved, nine to zero, and we ordnance 2884. All right, next item, 081223, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of signed variances for South Point Bank at 1720 28th Avenue South, brought to us by South Point Bank, Knight Signs, and Wyatt Pugh. We received an email from South Point earlier today where they asked for this to be carried over to the 29th so that the CEO and some members of the Board of Directors can be here to speak to the item. So I agreed to do that. So we will carry, well, we've got to open the public hearing. So I'll go ahead and do that, and then we will leave it open and carry it over for our meeting on the 29th. Ms. Smith?
Are we going to, are we going to require them to come back to committee?
Sorry.
Yeah, I heard that. Are we going to require them to come back to committee?
We can if you would like. I think that would, I think, it's your committee, so I don't want to impose it on you, but I'm happy with, for them to come.
I'd love for them to come back.
Will you ask them to come back to the committee meeting as well, Mr. Pew?
Because we did ask them to make some adjustments to their presentation to begin with, so I would love for them to come back and see if they've made any adjustments to their.
Mr. Jones?
Just, wouldn't the proper procedure be to not open the public hearing, but send it back to committee?
We have to open the public hearing because it was advertised.
So we're just going to keep it open here till it goes back to committee?
We're going to keep it open here and send it back to committee at the same time.
I would rather not send it back to committee, but.
I would.
Are you, are you willing to defer to Ms. Smith since it's her committee?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
But I just think that we need to make this as public as possible, that they're not here, and I thought we would do that in an open meeting or public hearing.
That's my point is, I think they need to come back to committee.
I think they need to do both.
Yes.
Is, I think, what we're saying. In other words, the committee is not in place of them coming back to the public hearing on the 29th.
No, they're, they're coming because their CEO is coming.
Yeah, I mean, we could just make the motion tonight and vote hell for it when we vote. We don't have to accommodate any requests.
It's truth.
You're correct. So let me do this before we go farther, just to make sure that I've done it. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this item tonight? Okay, we don't have anybody to speak to it tonight. Yeah, I mean, look, if the will of the council is to go ahead and consider this item tonight, we have communicated with, these people have communicated and would like, they cannot be here tonight. They did request.
Well, I don't think it was that they couldn't be here tonight. I think they couldn't be here tonight with the people that they wanted to be here with.
No, I agree. That would, to be specific, the CEO couldn't, and the directors that are coming could not be here tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Pew?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So.
Well, one other quick question.
Sure.
So can we confirm that the CEO will be at committee meeting and council meeting? I don't want to, again, sending it back if they're not going to show up. It's, I mean, I just want to know what, what the situation is in terms of attendance.
I can certainly, I can certainly ask.
Okay.
That's.
I doubt that that's going to, where are they coming from?
He's here.
Oh, in Birmingham?
It's a local.
It's a local. They're local. I, I think, I think we ought to carry this over, I mean, everyone knows how I feel about these, carrying these things over, leaving a public hearing open. I'm willing to do it tonight. I think we should do that. I, I think Ms. Smith's request to have it taken back to committee at the same time so that the committee can, and quite frankly, so the entire council can hear what the current proposal is, would be a good idea. I think Mr. Jones is also correct, that it would probably be a good idea to convey to them that they, that the people that they think are important to hear this issue probably should be heard at committee and at the public hearing.
Okay.
Because we are frustrated with the way this has gone. We're frustrated, I think, with the initial request. I think we were frustrated with the fact that we were supposed to have it heard tonight, and we're not. And so it, whoever is important, that they believe is important to, for us to hear on this issue, probably should be with us on the 22nd at committee and be with us for the public hearing on the 29th.
I will make that understood.
All right. All right, thank you. So we will carry that item over. Next item is 071023, public hearing set for January 29, 2024, at 6:00 PM for consideration of proposed revisions to the city's zoning ordinance, brought to us by Kale Smith and the Planning Commission, which voted nine to zero with a favorable recommendation. We will carry that item over for our next meeting on January 29th. Next item, 111123, public hearing set for January 29, 2024, at 6:00 PM to consider proposed amendments to the Homewood sign ordinance, also brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, and we will carry that item over for our public hearing, or, excuse me, for our meeting on January 29. Next item, 121223, public hearing set for January 29, 2024, at 6:00 PM to consider the, for consideration to approve amendment to the previously approved final development plan at 8:15 Greens Springs Highway for the Edge Mixed Use Development Project intended to reflect the approval, the approved resurvey and subdivision of the subject property's current four-acre site into two separate lots to facilitate future development, brought to us by Brian Hatcher of LBYD and Greens Springs Development LLC and J.J. Thomas. This comes, also comes to us from the Planning Commission with a vote of five to zero favorable recommendation. We will carry that item over for our next meeting as well. Next item, 131223, public hearing set for January 29, 2024, at 6:00. at six PM for consideration to rezone thirty-eleven Firefighter Lane from R-five to R-seven. The applicant is Shane Davis and, uh, Shane Davis, uh, to permit the construction of a two-unit townhouse development consisting of a total of three-thousand-six-hundred-forty-seventh square feet. This also comes to, to us from the planning commission with a five to zero favorable recommendation. We will carry that item over as well. Which brings us to our added item, oh-seven, twelve, twenty-three, request for consideration for Homewood Athletic Foundation to host Corna Palooza on Soho Plaza, brought to us by the Athletic Foundation and Counselor Smith, and we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Smith?
Uh, committee met right before our meeting, and we heard from Aaron Yost, who is the Homewood Athletic Foundation, uh, person who is in charge of the Corna Palooza tournament this year, and, um, the request is to have that, uh, event on the Soho Plaza again this year. They did last year. It was quite a success. Um, we heard from Ms. Yost, uh, the event is gonna take place on March seventeenth, Sunday, which is, uh, St. Patrick's Day, and they're gonna be working with, um, Taylor at Soho Social once again for their food and alcohol issues. Uh, so we voted four to zero as a committee to approve, um, the Homewood Athletic Foundation using the Soho Plaza. Uh, Ms. Andrus made the motion, and Mr. Alamon seconded.
All right, so we have a motion from Special Issues. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero and will be resolution twenty-four oh-one. Uh, which brings us to the amended committee referral agenda. I'd entertain a motion and a second, motion and a second for approval of that agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Sims, second from Mr. Gualdy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero, which brings us to other new business. The first item was dropped. Uh, second item is oh-five, oh-one, twenty-four, request to accept the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three annual report prepared by the Stormwater Management Authority on behalf of Homewood to be submitted to ADEM by January thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, brought to us by Wyatt Pugh, who's already gone. Um, this, there was obviously a time consideration for this, uh, and to get this, uh, off to ADEM. Um, I don't know if anyone's got any questions about it or anything, and if not, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Andrus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is nine to zero and will be resolution twenty-four oh-two. Next item, oh-six, oh-one, twenty-four, request for consideration of an ABC-oh-sixty special retail, more than thirty days license to PRG Luca LLC, DBA Luca Legato and Mercado, Mercado Legato located at seventeen twenty-two, Twenty-Eighth Avenue South, Suite one hundred, uh, brought by Melody Salter. Um, Mr. Gualdy, I think we've received a letter of no objection from the police, but as far as I know, not fire?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. That's correct.
So the motion would be to not have an objection, uh, pending receipt of, uh, the letter from fi, the fire department? If anyone would like to make that motion.
I would make a motion to, um, approve the issuance of the license pending approval from the fire department.
Second.
So just to clarify, to actually have no objection to the issuance of the license, okay. All right, so motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualdy. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero. Uh, next item, oh-seven, one, twenty-four, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of December nineteen, twenty twenty-three through January eight, twenty twenty-four, brought to us by Robert Riget and Melody Salter. Uh, Mr. Jones, did I see Mr. Gualdy?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I reviewed the vouchers this afternoon. I did not have any questions, though there were lots of reimbursements, uh, that are processing through this time of year, but, uh, everything looked in order, and, uh, I would make a motion for approval.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Gualdy, second from Mr. Jones. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And that is approved nine to zero and will be resolution twenty-four oh-three. Last item, oh-nine, oh-one, twenty-four, request for consideration of an ABC-oh-twenty restaurant retail liquor license for Slice Homewood LLC, DBA Slice Pizza and Brew House located at ten-ten Oxmore Road, uh, brought to us by Melody Salter. I think this is also one where we have one from police, but not fire?
I actually don't have the police.
Okay. Well, um, then why don't we just do this? Why don't, uh, we make the motion of having no objection contingent upon receiving both the letter from police and fire, and then we know we're covered.
I'll make a motion to approve subject to receiving a letter from both police and fire.
All right, so we have a motion, actually, Mr. Alamon got the first one in, so we'll let him make the motion for no objection, and the second from Mr. Harden. Any questions or comments?
Counselor, um, Wyatt, is this one we added to the agenda? I'm sorry.
It is. Yes. It is, was the one other new item, other new business item.
Great, thanks.
Sure. Uh, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As approved nine to zero, which brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few, uh, announcements for tonight. One, I've got Mr. Wolverton on Skype if you guys wanna say, say hey to him first.
Is his football team playing tonight? You're kidding me.
I, I think so.
You gotta be kidding me. I didn't even know.
I think it is, that's right, yeah, yeah. So, sorry, had to open on a, on a joke. Um, no, uh, as you guys are aware and have seen, some of the information that's come out in regards to the Kahaba Waste Authority, we have a meeting now that is set, um, on January nineteenth. Um, all the representatives from, uh, the contracted municipalities as well as Am Waste, uh, will be at this meeting. Um, we will be addressing several things that you guys are all aware of. Um, and just know that it is not just us that is experiencing the issues, um, at hand. So, uh, that meeting will happen, and we will update you as soon as it is over with. Um, we have the list for the, uh, fire chief that will drop on January twenty-second, uh, since Chief Hill was retired. Um, so we will, uh, as soon as that list drops, we will, uh, be conducting interviews, uh, for the fire chief position. Um, we were also, we will also be doing some, uh, IT director interviews starting next week. Um, so those things will, will be taking a lot of our time, um, over the next couple of weeks. So, we're also holding, uh, the city's holding over six people tonight and have six people on call, uh, thanks to Berkeley, uh, for any impending storm issues that may happen. Hopefully, everything stays south of us, um, but knowing that, you know, what we've gone through, uh, before Christmas and, uh, some of the stuff that we're still working through, uh, we just want to be as prepared as possible. So, um, we know that bad weather's going to hit. Um, we don't want anybody to have to endure what, what we've gone through, uh, over the past month, but just in case, uh, we wanna make sure that we are prepared. So, um, hope everybody had a wonderful holiday, and the new year is starting out great, and that's it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gualdy?
Uh, I will set public safety immediately following finance, most likely to just drop an item, so it won't last very long. Uh, other than that, it's, uh, good to be back and moving forward, and, uh, I won't say anything bad about Washington. Go along, go along, Jorge. It's, it's good natured. Uh, no other comments, thank you.
Mr. Alamon?
Uh, no, just wish everyone Happy New Year's. Good to be back.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
Um, I would like to set public works on behalf of Counselor Wolverton for after public safety, and that's it. No comments. Thanks. Happy New Year.
All right. Mr. Jones?
But I am set five. Happy New Year.
Ms. Smith?
Um, special issues to follow public works, and, um, we meet, uh, the, um, Homewood Historic Preservation Commission meets tomorrow night at seven o'clock upstairs in the fourth floor. Um, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Ms. Nelms?
Just got a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
And I'm confirming, this is January twenty-second.
It is.
Correct, okay. I will also set P and D and, um, grit my teeth and say, I hope Andrew has fun tonight, 'cause it was not fun watching the Texas-Washington game. Was it, Mike? That was not fun, was it? That's all for me.
Mr. Harden?
I just wanna thank everybody in the city, the city employees, the mayor's office, city council, city council president, just all the hard work that goes into running this city last year, um, and how well our city runs because there's a lot of hard-working people who care. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so just to follow up on what Ms. Andrus said, uh, for anyone watching, uh, next week, uh, we will be off for the holidays, so, uh, the committee meetings will be on the twenty-second and the next council meeting will be the twenty-ninth. Ms. Smith?
Am I right that the State of the City address is on the sixteenth?
It is, at the Valley-
On Tuesday, at the Valley Hotel.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, okay.
It is. All right, and thank everyone for a, a record in terms of announcements. I don't think it's ever gone that quick. As a matter of fact, I could keep talking for a few minutes and there would still be a record. So, thanks, everyone. Enjoy the game tonight. Happy New Year, and we'll see everyone in a few weeks.